Director Sean Ascom that the Senator has recognized the efforts of the Veteran Celebration Committee during our 13th year presenting a Veterans Honor Ceremony Parade on behalf of our military and veterans. I would like to ask that he be allowed to present that official entry into the congressional record upon Thursday of business.
Second, can you say? Okay. We have a lot of second items, two items to the agenda. Is Commissioner Eccleston, is Senator Cassidy coming here or is?
It's Lady, Lady, Lady.
Fantastic. Okay. So there are two potential agenda additions. One is to add a special edition commemorating the fortieth anniversary of Dixie Coal Storage Fire of 1984. And the second is the one that Commissioner Eccleston just described. I will now open a public hearing on adding these items to the agenda. If you have anything to say for or against adding these items to the agenda, members of the public, you're invited to come and share those comments now. Public hearing is open. No one rises to speak. Public hearing is closed. Now we can vote on adding these two items to the agenda. Vote must be unanimous to add.
And that motion passes with 12 in support, none in opposition. So those two items will be added to the end of your agenda as eleven, at the end of your new business section, we'll add those two items.
All right. That brings us to public comments. I have a great number of comments today. Where I start, I see three public comments are public comments from friends at Fairgrounds Field who are also visitors and have 15 minutes to talk. I just want to ask, I see the three there. Do you want to speak at both times or just during your 15 minutes?
No, we fill those out just in case.
Okay, great. So I'll set these aside and you'll use your 15 minutes to tell us about your comments on that topic. So that means our first comment is from Ms. John Glover. Welcome, Ms. Glover.
Thank you. Please to all members of the House, we have John Glover, Deputy of Department 270, here for the Indiana vote, 7/18. I want to just remind us all specifically that when there are issues that I read on your agenda that are not clear, I will and do send out emails to people attention. That intent and purposes only to gain an explanation of what the purpose of your legislation offered is to address. Now, there were a couple of pieces of legislations you all had that followed me, one being the advance introduction of Art of 64/64 of 2024, which deals with monuments, and then Revolution, the advance of Resolution 69 of 2024. Now, I'm going to ask the question, as I often do, what in both these instances will be unpacked beyond citizens of the parish? The monument issue, I thought we could already have talked about what much else is available and what not to be afforded or even put in places whereby the parish is overly. And then with the issue of the Fairgrounds Salem. Now, I read and I shared with you all in an email what I have found through my research that Mayor Arsono had a disposition per the city. So my question in this regard is, what is it that is being asked of the citizens of the parish to address? Are you asking for funding? Because I believe even in the information I shared with you all, it was specific, there were dollar amounts that were made. And I just need to know that we're not about to undertake the undertaking that the system there they've given to those of Fairgrounds Salem and told them those four specific things that they need to address. Now, if they do not address those things, what is it that you're saying that in this instance will be circumvented for about now that becomes a part of us, the citizens of the parish, who will have to meet whatever is being wrong beside them? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glover. Our next comment is from Colleen Hughes. Welcome, Mr. Hughes. Well, it's settled. So if it's not, can anybody hear me? My mic is green. I'll just yell, "Welcome, Mr. Hughes."
I was just coming to see him have crash into life.
Please speak as loud as you can. Our mic's gonna work today, I'm sorry.
All right. Crash to life, they helped me out, like when I got out of jail, it's a good job and motivation. It'd be a shame for sure if they didn't go to jail anymore. Help a lot of people out. It'll be a good job. I still don't work right now.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Our next comment is, our next comment is from, I think I might say this wrong, and Welcome, Ms. Mosley.
Hey, how everybody doing? I'm speaking on behalf of Compassion for Life. It really has a big impact on my life. I want to thank you, Ms. Melissa, for helping me. She gave me a lot of resources to help, also to help with the situation that I have going on when I can't use. She counseling me when I be going through my crisis. And I feel like they just offered a lot of these services for former women that's been incarcerated. And I feel like they need to get more recognition for those services. And I really feel like they really helped a lot of people. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Mosley. Our next comment is from Rhonda Bunton.
Hi, I'm Emily. Um, my name is Rhonda Bunton. I volunteer at Compassion for Life since 2013 when the work came. And Carla and Vanessa are really compassionate about, you know, helping with the community, helping with, you know, people who are being incarcerated. I know for a fact, you know, a time where, you know, Ms. Bunton was, you know, headed to take her entrance to the job interview on Saturday. She took it personally, you know, needed to ride. She took me to get a ride.
Seeing, you know, people come in and, you know, I need to see Ms. Carla, I need to see Ms. Vanessa. I just got out, you know, I need, I need help. I have also witnessed Carla Bunton, you know, go, you know, in her own pocket when they, you know, I don't have anything, Ms. Bunton, nothing. And, you know, I've seen her go in her own pocket and give them money and help. So she's very, you know, compassionate about, you know, compassion for lives and helping, you know, the community, you know. Her Vanessa also, you know, she does great with counseling. And I think that, you know, Compassion for Life needs to stick around, you know, to help. They help everybody, anybody in need. They will. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bunton. Our next comment is from Michael. Is my microphone working?
Yeah.
Is this working? Yes, great. Our next comment is from Michael Washington.
My accountability at this time is to express what I've seen with Compassion for Lives. I've been with them for about, about a year. And during that year, I've seen a lot. I learned a lot. They, they're compassionate, which means they're, they're in it to, with you. So that's what really got me, I guess, down with them like that because, hey, they help. Vanessa, she does great. She's a great counselor. I mean, it's just a wonderful organization. And I love it. And that's, that's pretty much what I got to say about it. It's, it's great. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Our next commenter is Ms. Evelyn Beverly.
My name is Evelyn Beverly. I want to speak on behalf of Compassion for Life, which is Ms. Carla and Ms. Vanessa, which they have been wonderful to me since I've been released from being incarcerated. They helped me with a lot of things and they still help me to this day. They just helped me got a job. They helped me, actually I'm back at school as well. You know, I'm going to get my GED and I'm actually going to go back to nursing school. So I just want to say this is a good organization for them and for, they can bless many more people. So I just want to say thank you to them and keep up the good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beverly. Our next comment is from Jay Blake. Welcome, Ms. Blake.
Hey, how are y'all? I'm here to speak on behalf of Compassion for Lives. They do a lot inside and outside of the jail system. They helped me relearn how to be a parent to my kids. They helped me figure out my triggers and, and things that I can do to step away from the life that I was living. They helped me get back in school. Me and Vanessa are supposed to be meeting up after this to continue to get my help and what I need in order to be, what I need to be, to be a active citizen in society. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Our next comment is from Cory Lafitte.
Hey, how are y'all?
Hello, Cory Lafitte.
Hi, my name is Cory Lafitte. And two years ago, I was incarcerated and I got put in Ms. Vanessa's class. And of course, I just wanted the time, the free time to get out free, right? The months it took off my sentence. But as I got into her class, I realized that she gave me the tools I needed to be able to live a sober life. And I did get my time off and I got out from there. She helped me get into counseling. I do counseling with her. I did my area management with her. She got me a job. I went to Horseshoe. I've been at Horseshoe over a year now. Not only that, I had lost my baby and I've had my baby back for a year now. She pushed me, kept me going. I finished active recovery, all because of Vanessa. Anytime I have a problem, I call this lady. And this lady answers the phone no matter what time. Not only that, I got my apartment. I needed furniture for my apartment because CPS said you have to have furniture before you can get your baby back. Ms. Vanessa made sure that the nesting ed, she furnished me with, with furniture for my apartment so I could get my baby back in time for me to get my baby back. I've had my baby back a year now. So I've been at my job, had my baby back, and she's given me all these tools to succeed. They really are a great organization and I love her to death. Without her, I don't know what kind of person I would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Our next comment is from Laishia Kennedy.
Great day, everyone.
Welcome, Ms. Kennedy.
Hi. I'm here speaking on the behalf of Compassion for Lives, Ms. Carla and Ms. Vanessa. I met them two about two years ago, a little bit over two years ago. And I was becoming a new mom and I took some parenting classes. And they are very loving. They are very open in what I've been about, open, like they're very honest. They are very godly. And their service, their service was very professional and the service, rendering that service, when I looked up for parenting, they was charging by the hour. And that was like $30 to $40 an hour. And that could hit hard depending on how long or how many days or how many hours you want to take parenting classes. For at their, what they offer is free. Understanding that everybody, some people come from different backgrounds and some people, like some women just both are getting out of jail. That wasn't my case. But if you're getting out of jail, you're not, you don't have the funds to afford that. So for this service to be in jeopardy of being shut down, that would hit a lot of people hard and the community will, will hurt. Not just one person, but the community will take a hard hit. So I'm asking you guys to use your, the power that we have, that you guys have, to think about this and make a really honest, wholehearted, godly decision. We all have to remember that we can, because I'm a business person also. And in the field that I do, I do hair. And every, maybe twice a year, I do free services for the community, for those that lack, for those that don't, that are less fortunate. And that comes from humility. That comes from, we have power to do whatever we want. But we are, we have to understand that coming from a godly stance, we can do that sometime. We have to swallow our pride and do what is needed for people that may not be in our shoes. So I pray that you guys will hear us all out and do what is best for the community. Thank you all.
Thank you. Our next last comment is from Kendrick Dorsey.
Hey, how y'all doing?
Welcome, Mr. Dorsey.
I just wanted to say, I want to speak on behalf of them and just saying, what I really admire about the program is Ms. Vanessa and Carla, they truly care about people, you know. And you can have people that could be in a position, they might not get the most out of people. People that really see the potential in people, that really brings some opportunity out of, you know, like returning citizens, you know. And what they did for me was, I was working a job as a well to help while traveling. I was for, you know, they was treating me good. Well, while I was in between jobs, they had, they was about to get me on in Sabre Industries, but I got the call back to go to my previous job. But in the process, they got me pre-enrolled for business administration school. I got a landscaping business already. So even though I'm in a position where I could help myself a lot, they still found a way to add to me. You know, that's a blessing. I don't really put my time in the stuff. Like, most time people tell me, come speak or do something, man, I'll be here. You know what I'm saying? But the fact that what they trying to do and what they stand for, I made time to come today and that says a lot. You know, I believe even them just like they believe in us. Have a blessing here.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Many beautiful testimonials for Compassion for Lives. We appreciate all of those. Thank you.
You can understand everything that's involved in that process and get it back to us. The only exception is if your conduct of the job is purely electronic, i.e., yours organization, you set up a bunch of computers, you let people come in, in some kind of private area, they can go onto the Secretary of State's website, they can go to the Go Vote app and they can register and let sign. You don't need to register for that if you're doing any electronic registration job. But otherwise, there is a registration requirement and you get more of that information from my office. There's also something going on right now that I think everybody needs to know about. The state has a nursing home voting assistance program. And what the Secretary of State and the Landry is really doing is trying to push that program. So what they've done is sent all the nursing homes throughout the state, information on the program along with application. Before, if you signed up for the over 65 or you signed up an absentee application, you could also apply for the nursing home program. It was the same application. But now there are two separate applications. What the state has done is sent those applications to local nursing homes. However, we are getting calls because they are under the impression that this is a mandatory program for their residents. And it's not. It's a voluntary program. Every program that the state Louisiana has regarding voting is an individual program. So that resident can't be requested. The administrator can't request it for them. The administrator can't handle that for them. As a matter of fact, the letters that went out were addressed to the residents. Now, in a lot of these nursing homes, I don't know how they work, but we're getting calls from administrators. And there are two specific examples where the administrator was under the impression that all the residents had to do this particular application. They don't. Because what it does is this, if a resident of a nursing home is currently on the absentee program, they will get a mail ballot. If they fill out this new application, they will come off the mail program and they'll be on the nursing home program, which basically means they will vote by paper, but they will vote on the day that we come to them at the nursing home to do it. They won't get one through the mail. So please, if you hear any of your constituents asking about this, particularly those of you who have nursing homes, some of those guys, and I've gotten calls from those two or three of them, are under the impression that these applications are mandatory. They're not. As a matter of fact, if they're residents, we got a batch of about seven contacting nursing homes, turns out that three of the people speaking, three of the people are already on the whole time mail program. They wanted to stay on the program. There were two who are not who wanted to be on the nursing home visitation program. But the administrator thought they all had to pull them out. So please check that if you have nursing homes in any area, that you have constituents who are in nursing homes and they want to talk to their families to make sure that they understand that there are two separate programs. If they're comfortable voting by mail, they can stay on the ballot. But if they want to get the nursing home visitation program, that's what that second application is for. One of the other things you may have heard about that program is the state has passed a law now that says the over 65 program is used to be continued once you're on it, you're on for others. And we call it the rollover, yes, so people continue to get mail ballots every year. Well, beginning in January 2025, there's a four-year limit. So the first, the people that are on the program now and those who signed up through now in January 25 will be good until December 31, 2029. This is a four-year, December 31 end of year program, then they have to sign up again. So all those people who in the past knew that they got on the program 20 years ago, they've been on the program for 20 years, well, starting in January 25, we're going to have to count those years because of December 31, 2029 that we kicked off. The state has told us that they intend to provide notices and I notice it before that time period so people will know they're rolling off the program. I think it's going to be a big change for people because they're not accustomed to having to come back and sign up again for that program. So please, if you have questions about that, if you have questions about that, contact my office. Again, they are good until December 2029 at this point, and then that will change. A couple of other notes, about the absentee voting, you know, there are lots of legislation over the course of the summer dealing with that. Let me tell you a few of the key points. We just received the ballots and we have 13,000 ballots going out, over 13,000. And that's our rollover list. These are the people that have been on that list and they stay on the list, but that, that will change. We have 13,000 going out. Again, they have until the day before the election at 4:30 to get those ballots back to us. And it's very important, there are three identifiable things now in statute that will automatically cause the ballot to be counted. Missing voter signature, missing witness signature, missing mother's maiden name. Those are the three things that will get your ballots counted. Now, what that means, it doesn't mean they're going to be automatically thrown out, it means that it will go to the board, and it's Laura Newberg here, who is chairman of our local parish board of election supervisors, it will go to the board for determination. But I can tell you, as a member of the board who's been sitting there for a few years now, I think Laura and Michael endorse this, oftentimes the board will reject those. You know, if it's not mandatory, it's a board decision, but this board, this parish has traditionally rejected those. So please, in your absentee ballot this year, you're going to get a couple of things. But actually, you should have gotten accustomed to the yellow secrecy suite, the state calls it. And that's just to keep your ballots, so you really know it's confidential and in the envelope. You're also going to get two others. One is, again, instructional slip to go over all those things that you should do upon that ballot. The second thing that's in there, or the third thing that's in there, is a completed sample plan. So you can look at it and say, here, what mine should look like? Does mine look like this? Just the value you shouldn't have. You shouldn't have all of that. So please, which of the constituents, letting those, very important. The information is on a website, it's on the Secretary of State's website, it's on the Go Vote website, it's going to be in the packet. Follow those instructions very, very carefully, very specifically, and they should have no problem with their ballot being counted on election night. That's something that's very important. The other item, you know, in the past, we had the issue, and the state passed a law that says only an immediate family member can witness more than one ballot. Hey, we had a lot of issues that come out of nursing homes, but we worked with them starting last election, talking to them, getting them to understand what the law requires. But it says that only an immediate family member can sign one. Also, only an immediate family member can return more than one. You cannot come to our office and bring six or seven ballots that are not members of your immediate family. You cannot do that. And anyone who brings in a ballot that turns again must sign when you've read it, when you brought it in, who brought it in, and what was there. If your ballot, if the ballot is missing on this item and it's incomplete, again, you will be notified and given the opportunity to cure that ballot, as long as it's done before the deadline. So if something busts off, you get a cure letter, you get a call, you get an email that says, hey, if you're missing a witness signature, you got the opportunity to come down and fix that. And you get the opportunity to come down and fix it. So make sure that they fill in those slacks correctly and there shouldn't be any problems there. If there's any information, anyone, you can always go to our website, cattleholder.org. We try to keep it updated. I'm sorry, I don't have a full-time person to do that. We have to do it ourselves. So if you go to that website and you see it there, or that may be in there, please let us know. We try to keep it all up to date. We have precinct locations, poll polling locations. We have all the information we can about absentee voting. We have all the information we can about absentee voting, anything that has to do with registration and maintenance of the voter rolls. So we invite you to please use that as a resource. Tell as many of your constituents as possible that Go Vote app that the state has is invaluable too. If you can tell a little bit of questions, people calling, yeah, what's on the ballot, what's here? All that information is there, they can pull up their information specific to them. As a matter of fact, if they get the call and they have a question, that commission sometimes will say, hey, cell phone, if not, they will go there, I'll say, I'll dial the number here for ten minutes and you can check. They'll tell you where you should be, what you're voting on, everything on the ballot. This year, we only have five ballot styles, meaning that not many things, only most people only have to vote for president, congress, and a constitutional amendment in our area. We have two congressional districts, but you know, it's gonna be one or the other. There are a couple of smaller pre-elections in the northern part of the parishes, but it should be a fairly short ballot. It shouldn't take a whole long time. We just have a lot of people, but we think the movement will be quick because the ballot isn't as long as it's suspended in other elections. I think that's all the notes I have. I'll be here to answer any questions that may come up. Mike's gonna speak of all some of the other issues that go with the actual activity. But again, that nursing home program is very important right now. That information is out there. There is some confusion about it with the administrators in the nursing homes. So please, if you could make that distinction for us or refer to us, we can take care of those situations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sibley. Is there a couple commissioners have questions for you? The first is Commissioner Gage Moss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Sibley, for that update. The last time that you were here, we talked about workshops and community events. How many workshops or community events have you participated in to share all of this new knowledge that you can share with us? Some plethora of things that you've shared, and I just wanted to know where we are, especially with those nursing homes, their leadership team? Have they been afforded this information that you shared?
Well, it was simple. What we're getting, and often times we'll find out, is the state will send out something and then we'll start to get in contact from them. So we can talk to them individually. One thing that was not authorized to do, and keep in mind, our office is a ministerial office, meaning we're almost supposed to do those things that the statute says we're supposed to do. But we're related in the kind of other things, policy kind of things. So we don't do, we're not authorized to do outreach and do a lot of programming ourselves, but we accept invitations, you know, whether it's North Shippensburg Business Group, whether it's fraternal groups, whether it's educational groups. But more often, this is individuals from nursing homes. These are individual administrators who are calling and reporting on the community and about the program. So we accept any invitation we can, if it's on the people.
I have a perfect invitation for you for a national night out. It'll be here with your family in the Moretown community. And I know that that is an area that I get a lot of calls from. My favorite clerk of court knows that really well, and we get a lot of calls on election day or coming up to it. And I know that the new flap has been quite confusing to a lot of the citizens who view it. So it's a great opportunity to meet those seniors who are out there, or those who are not able to come to the polls, as well as those who are looking to find out if they're active, if they've been heard from the list. So I would love to invite you to that event. It'll begin at six p.m. That's at Winfield Manor Home. Have tables set up for you and give you that opportunity. I had two other questions, and I know that one of them is going to be for the group. So I'll hold those. But I wanted to ask you, I know that we passed a resolution about opening another early voting location. You heard about it? Okay, it's official. So where are we?
You know, I got the resolution, I know you did, but no, we're busy trying to, first of all, make sure we got the second one that we have operating well and getting this election done. You know, I shared with you guys when we did the first one, the process that it goes through, and what the state requires and all this thing you have to go through. That really hasn't changed, so we have to go through that same process again. But have we started the process yet? No, because until we kind of get a feel that, in our opinion, is needed, you know, we understand the challenges we have with people, with resources, with money. And I think when we open a third site, that's a site that we have to staff, and we can't open and shut them back. Once we open, they are increasing site, and we don't get it all, sorry, we're not gonna do this year. So before we do that, we're gonna look very closely at it. One of the things, the way we see it, is how this election goes. You know, in the past with the two sites, we had periods where we were very, very busy. Then we had periods where it was not so busy. So we're gonna look at that, but we haven't looked at it yet, no.
And the resources that you're talking about is just for that, that early voting, correct?
The challenge with what we do, even though for them, the election's falling in, say, we're up at two month periods, spring and fall, we don't have the oxygen green with people just for that. Because of the training, everything that's built into them, making sure we don't have any other kind of stakes. For example, we had in Pat, we only have this. So we can't just bring in people, you know, a week before the election and say, okay, you gotta be in the election market, because there's a lot that goes on in between that time. So no, when we, if we're gonna staff a third site, we have to staff for that, and that staff in a safe place.
Okay, so it wouldn't be temporary, it would be permanent? So they're different from the election commissioners?
Right, right. Because one of the, just for them, one of the things, you have to have a, I have four civil service employees. Right now, two of those are used to fill, other two are not, so kind of filling. I have to have one of those certified people at each site, at least one of them, you know, right now. And again, I want to just thank the parish, because you guys supplement my budget. Y'all allow me to hire all these workers that allow us to do. If we didn't have the money that y'all gave us, I'd have five people right now trying to run the bikes and push it beyond this impossible. So again, we thank you guys for that. And that's a part of what it supports us, getting to do second sites and everything like that.
We can have some additional conversation about it in the last. Do you have an informational sheet, a RQ one, with all of that information already out there?
It's in different places, because, you know, there are people that have registration questions. So for example, we have sheets on votes, we have sheets on the drives, we have sheets on absentee. So it depends on what the specific issue is, that we have specific information that we can get for that. Other than that, you know, we can just answer as a question, because a lot of our stuff is big time. You know, it's per se, another way to change this whole.
Okay, last one. The information that you're talking about right now, is that available on the website, on the link to cattlevoter.org? If there is something that you can click to get that information?
Which are we getting? The nursing home program?
All of them. The nursing home, the early voting, the extension on the eleven days instead of the seven days. All of that is available on the website?
The Secretary of State's website is always a good place. Our local website, cattlevoter.org, cattlevoter.org. That's where we'll have all the dates, polling locations, sites. In case of this extended early voting period, it has all the information about the flaps and absentee voting, and everything is on there. The nursing home program is a specialized program. More information is available on the Secretary of State's website. And we have it virtually, but it's not like a handout. It's just another option for citizens who want to vote by mail.
Thank you, Mr. Sibley. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Gage Moss. Commissioner Hepburn.
Mr. Sibley, you stated that they sent the information to the nursing home, and then the administrators called in you. It appears as though they just sent us some applications without any cover there, or any instructions. Was that the case?
There was a cover there, because I had a sense to see it. Well, I had what the secretary sent us. And then when I got the call, they said, hey, see what you got, so I could know exactly what I know what I'm thinking, and then see what you're looking at. Well, Secretary Lender had a letter, it was basically a welcome, that, hey, guys, you know, this program in the past, it used to say that way. We have a new app here, if there's some copies of it. And apparently, because I read the letter, I wanted to see where it says it's mandatory, you know, like that. It did say that. Apparently, there was just some confusion with some of the administrators who, for example, one I talked to, she wasn't even familiar with absentee voting. So apparently, she was certainly new, because we were trying to draw the contracts of when voting by mail in this program, she didn't know about that. So there may be some defaults out there that we want to be, whether we're just gonna educate them. And I thought this would be a good opportunity to get it out broadly in case there are other crises, because I only got three calls, and then we have many more nursing homes in that year. We just may not have as many people interested in the program, I assume that. But we do have some now, so we'll be doing the nursing home program. This fall, we'll be going out and taking care of those voters who passed between now and the twenty-nine.
And the yellow, the little pride is asleep? I mean, what happens if you don't put it in there?
Nothing.
Okay. That was kind of confusing, like, people concerned, asking people, because they wanted to put that yellow deal in there.
No, it's really for their patients, it's a different conference level, you know, like.
Like we say, all this time, we have one, but now, you know, it just kind of adds to the confusion.
It wasn't filled with that.
All right. And say you have a household with five persons in absentee voting. So you can, all of those family members can sign all of them. And if they want to, they can bring them in.
Yes.
But they can't do it for others.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepburn. Commissioner Barrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, there's been a lot of Trump voter suppression throughout the nation, especially since coming up this year. And having spent some time there at the state's legislature myself, I guess my first question was, and it appears to have partially answered it, and that is, why was it necessary for people, or groups, I assume, both a lot, person, individual, or group, to register with the Secretary of State thirty days prior to him implementing or going out on voter registration?
No, they don't have to register thirty days before. The thirty days is, a couple of kind of persons who live in that app is producing it to hustle the thirty days. But you can register today and go to your guy next week. Because all it is, and that's all I wanted to tell you, all it is, is a contact form. That's all it is. We have to a lot of points, is who they are, their address, everything, how many applications they picked up. So at the same time, because there was confusion in the past, what they'll get is a, some checklist, hey, these are all the things you can do to make sure it's right and then, but you get back to us within thirty days. Now, the question comes, and I've asked it, I don't think it's been clarified yet, because it's still new, is what happens if you get them after thirty days? Well, the default position that we've got from the state is reprocess the application that this other one got. You know, it's just like now, you guys remember all the discussion about someone signing voter one ballot? And in the past, after the discussion, whether or not those ballots would count? Well, because the state has codified things now, it's not the ballot that will be penalized now, it's the person who didn't sign. Because now they make that a criminal violation. In the past, it wasn't, it was just something you could do, but it wasn't a criminal statutory violation. But now it is. So what we've been advised to do, if we see that, and I think you guys knew at the last election I told you that, because of all the talk and education, we didn't see much of that. But if we see that, we would simply turn and rename the person that we're seeing to the investigator, and that person's ballot will be registered forward. The voter, the voter, something, anything else is correct.
I guess that was my follow-up question. If somehow these individuals or groups do not register, and they do some voter registration, and what does the penalty matter?
And that's something I think the state is still working through. I can imagine what may happen in some respects on that person being included in that assignment, clarified yet. But the one thing that I can tell you is, the voter who, you know, may or may not even do it, you know, in some cases, has signed it, is not gonna be penalized. If their ballot is otherwise valid, they're otherwise registrable, and so we will vote this one count. As I said, in the past, when we had those multiple decisions, the ballot was a question that the board had to decide. You know, we gotta count these a lot. And on the last election, I'm not gonna say, I think the board made a decision that we were not going to count any of them, one of those ballots, so there were five with the same signature, one of them counted forward. The state has clarified that with these changes in that note, the ballot vote forward, the person signing will be held accountable. And that we do with the, this is Secretary of State's investigative office.
But the person or organization?
On the registration side.
The drive, you're saying they have been probably given the rule to the extent of identifying what the penalty would be? Because that has a chilling effect.
I'm not aware of that. I think it's something that they'll work with the A.D.'s office and try to come up with, to get the appropriate media that makes constitutional liable. But one thing that we've been asked to do and we don't do is to try to penalize. Even the ones that we've gotten, the ones we got from two years ago. If they were correct, you know, we contacted the person, if possible. If they weren't, we contacted the person, you know, if you still wanna register, this is your good act, so you can do it right. So once it gets us, our goal, our task, our main aim is to try and get them registered. And not penalized, because somebody did a drive, sent the forms in later, but, you know, it's only seen before the vote was booked, so.
Well, I mean, just from the standpoint of people trying to do the drive, they're doing a civic duty, atheist, civic duty, if you're gonna turn around and penalize that person for doing it, it's a new destination, and the fact that, that is a piece of pressure that I see in this whole process.
And it could be, Ms. Barrow, why they haven't come up with, we haven't been advised of any kind of penalty or anything like that. That's also why what the state came up with, is providing, is specific details. Because in the past, just from what I've seen, people will come up and do a drive, and we have, the board statement, we had put together a little packet for them, and we get your management, hey, guys, make sure you do this, 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 or that. But that was just us working with individual people. What has been developed now is a kit that basically has much more detailed information for them. So if I'm gonna do a drive, and I'm registering, I get this kit, then I shouldn't have any questions, because I know what I have to do. And I know the contractor, that I have to get these, these one back into the R.B. office. So I think there's nothing to cut down on a lot of problems. And I don't think we're gonna have an issue with a lot of people holding those ballots for one year. Not with this new system, because other than that, we just contact them, and I'll say, hey, either this one, thirty days, you don't pick us ballots, or I'll pick us an application, you see?
So my final question is, so I'm understanding that registration with the Secretary of State's office this morning, is there a Secretary of State, if you have some valid information to go out and do it correctly?
No, it's a, it's a, basically what you're doing, registration, so a lot of contact. What we've done, what the state has done, is wrap a packet around that to eliminate the problem of people having drives and not knowing how to do it. Because in the past, we've done for them, they were simply not feeling that. And again, particularly in some of the younger people. And some of these guys would show up and think they're registered, and they're telling them, no, you're not. Well, I did a drive at my school, and. Yeah, but we never got the paper. So I think what the state is doing with this system is trying to eliminate that and lessen the possibility of, of us getting a bag of applications from, you know, six months, twelve months, to do it.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Commissioner Barrow. Commissioner Toppin.
I want to thank both of you all for showing up today, but I have a couple of questions. And correctly, if I heard you properly, no thirty days requirement. The packets must be, the forms must be turned in within the thirty days. Because again, it's all over my community anyway, that we had to register, and it was gonna take thirty days before we can get permission to submit these packets that get people to register to vote. So that's not true.
That's not true. And the registration, let me clarify, the registration is not permission at all. You can have a drive if you want. It's just to give the state and us information on who you are during the drive. And we can give you the information to say, hey, if you really want your ballot to be successful, and you want these applications to be processed, get high interest. So it's not a permission, it's purely registered.
Okay, so again, I'd like to get the weeds on this one. If I choose to go register some people tomorrow, I can't without having to go into the Secretary of State?
You're not supposed to. I'm reluctant, generally, with you can and can't, because people do things all the time. But you're not supposed to. If you can't, if you wanna have a drive this weekend, the only requirement you need to go to the Secretary of State's website, take two minutes, fill out a form, or you can come to my office and pay five minutes, and then you can go. That's all, it's a registration.
My next question. And I'm kind of uneasy with that answer, but again, I appreciate you being here. What about those people that are not technologically savvy, particularly some of the elders that are in the community? I hear about all the different websites, they can go to things this nature, see things. But if I have this person that don't have a computer, don't have internet, how do they find out about this information as well?
Calls. They call. The, I think the short answer is candy question as well, that you got, because we realize a lot of this stuff is electronic, a lot of people are uncomfortable with it. We tell people, hey, go, go go at, something like, I don't know, self. The option is always to call by office.
And what number should you call?
Two two six, six eight nine one. Even on election day, we get the call. We call some people, hey, I'm over here, they're telling me I can't go here. We're looking, oh, you should be over there, or with their commissioner. Hey, I have a person here who, they're only inactive at this time, I'd be able to, I'd be able to wait to deal with them on that. So the short answer is, is give us a call, and we can walk you through it. We can walk you through it. And there's a lot of stuff we can do over phone, but it has to be with like a person. And there's a lot of stuff we can do over phone, but it has to be with the person. Has to be that much.
Okay, so once again, three, one, eight, two, two, six, six, eight, nine, one. And my last question. What happens if a person, based on this nursing home visitation program, what happens if a person is physically at a nursing home, but for whatever reason goes to the doctor, is actually hospitalized the day that you arrive? What happens to his or her ability to vote?
If they're in the nursing home program, and the schedule date, when you go there, you're not there, you have to be scheduled to come back, you're not, as long as we're not passed at that point. And if not safe, then we have to return them together.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Gregory Young.
I think, Mr. President, first of all, I guess it's just for our own information, these proceedings, in the absence of the video recording, will these proceedings be made available to the public?
These are being recorded, and we will upload them to YouTube as well, yes. So they are being recorded. Now, they're just not being, I don't think, live streamed, so they will be available.
Okay, thank you very much. I too want to thank the two of you all for showing up today and sharing this critical information with us about it. Just to piggyback on something, one topic, one line of questions, Commissioner Kaufman, I think I just want a basic understanding, this recent legislation, whether it's regarding voter registration, or nursing home activities, or what Commissioner Efferson asked a question about, if there are five members of the family, you know, can you take these voting forms to your good office? Are these, are these laws invented in Louisiana Civil Code or Criminal Code?
Most of them are in the Civil Code, the election code. Even, if I'm not mistaken, even the statute that criminalizes a person signing more than one, I still think that's in the election code. So there really are a bunch of elections in the election code, and maybe a few things that are double in the criminal code, that actually put criminal penalties, but it's all in the Civil Code, how do we do it?
Okay, so if I, so if I want to register people, I'm not authorized, I can't go to jail?
Not currently. I'm not aware of the statute that would have to exist.
Okay, so really, they're just putting all this information just to help us, bro?
I suppose so, yes. You know, I think the challenge that they, for most citizens out there, is, is, you know, we spend a lot of time in several of our workshops, kind of, and change, you know, we're interacting with the legislature, there's this type of thing done, and our association is meeting with committees to try to help them understand their act on the ground, and we spend a lot of time trying to, you know, by the time the session ends, and they publish it, well, you know, we're in August, September, so we're trying to catch up and understand it. That's why we generally tell people, you've got a real question about the contact, so there's some things, you know, the code is good, but any of you who are currently dealt with the code, you know, there's gaps in code. There are things the code doesn't cover, and you have to try and figure out how to make it work. Like that question, you know, hey, it's a criminal penalty, but what happens to the applications? What happens, you know, those are the questions that are still being worked through. I think the key, though, with any question you have, if you have it, if your decisions have it, give Michael Paul, give me a call, because we, we can get information that we don't have, and we can get the information directly from the horse's mouth, so that everybody knows this is the correct information, and not perhaps other stuff that they hear out there. Because we, we get it, and then, you know, AG kind of tries to break it down, to make it make sense, and we try to make it make sense, and then we try to pass that on. I know it's confusing, but I think the bottom line is, if everyone, and I said this before, if you are registered voter caterper, and right now, we're about 155,000, if you're registered voter caterper, and you have any questions at all about your registration, where you vote, how you vote, contact our office. You know, if you don't want to go online, Secretary of State, call us, and my guys will walk through it for you. And I think that's the best way to do it, because this stuff is hard, you just, it's hard to stand up here with a sheet, and go, here it is, because there'll be something that won't be on the sheet that will pop up. So what we're trying to do, is answer what the state's doing, the registration requirement for registration drives is there, it's just a requirement, it's not permission. The codifying, what will cause your ballot to be challenged, takes away a lot of uncertainty and questions that people have to sit there and figure out, but the state says, hey, these are the things we want you to look for. The over sixty-five program that's making people aware is coming, it's not here yet, but in twenty-nine, you know, there'll be some stuff that they need to take their bit back on, because nobody seems to be doing that. The early voting period is extended this year, and it'll be eleven days rather than ten. So those are just basic things. The rest of it, you know, the election, the people who voted, they still vote the same way, right now, it's about the same machine, until the state makes a change. So some of the stuff we hear is, is like insider baseball, you know, this stuff that we have to figure out, and go and try and figure out, whatever, has it affected any citizen? If they know that they're registered, they know where to go, they know that their ballot has the votes on it that they're supposed to vote for, then they're going to do that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Gregory Young. Commissioner Kaufman, second time.
Yes, just for clarity, immediate family, what does that mean?
I didn't even ask you that. I have a cheat sheet that's on my desk, on my stack, that's everybody, basically, if you think in terms of, everything's straight up and down, mother, father, grandmother, grandparents, brothers, sisters, spouses are included to a certain extent. It's interesting, because once you get to certain uncles and grandparents, you kind of fall off, but it is defined in the code, that's a statute definition. My guys all have it spelled out, they have exactly what, and I wish I could say any quote on the top of my name, but I'll say something wrong. I'm a bit mad, but I'll say something wrong. So, but it is, this question, we can answer that question, if you like, exactly who fits that category. Laura, okay, is it okay, Mr. President?
Sure. I'm ready to, to mention.
Jesus, I can see this. Immediate family members defined as the individuals, children, spouses of the children, brothers and their spouses, sisters and their spouses, parents, spouses, and the parents of his spouse. So it's kind of straight up and down. You, your parents, your children, their spouses, my brothers and sisters, their spouses. Once you get a young dad, once you start dealing with cousins and stuff like that, that's where you're defined. But it is defined in the code, that's the definition. That's the definition that you use.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. Thank you, Mr. Sibley. That's all the questions Commissioners have for you at this time. Mr. Clerk, please, share your comments with us.
Commissioners, I'd be very brief. Precincts, changes for this upcoming election, everyone will need to know this, and I'll leave a copy with Jeff. Warner Park Elementary is now moving to Cattle Heights. Praise Temple is moved to Sacred Heart, and then to Oak Park. Sacred Heart accepted it, and then once we made the move, they decided they didn't want it. So it's at Oak Park, which is already a precinct. Sunset Acres will be moved into Westwood, and Ascension Classical will be moved into Norris Ferry. One time, Norris Ferry was our largest precinct with voters, but they've added on to their church, so we're going to use the back of the church for the precinct. This will be the first election presidential with the new precinct changes, where we went from one hundred and fifty-four to one hundred and twenty-eight. We expect that to go very well. We've had two elections that voters have got to see this in action. I will have approximately sixty courts, if they're precincts, to help voters, make sure they get to the right precinct, if it's got multiple precincts in one location. You will see one thing different at this election. The state has gave me a little attitude on how many machines will be at precincts. So any precinct that you had walked in, if there was only one machine, will now be two. Any precinct you walked in with two will now have three. Any one that you had four will be three. Try and keep as many machines as possible at the precincts, especially the small ones, because I don't need them going out on me. If they go out, we have to vote paper votes, and that means the results will be a day or two away, so we don't want to get to that other half. That's it, if you have questions.
I have Mr. Atkins on the board.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. President. Thanks for coming down. Mr. Stantz, can you please remind me if, like, for example, the people that previously voted this intention, and are now going to Norris Ferry Community Church, those people that are experiencing that change in voting locations, do they get a letter telling them about it? How do they know that?
Yes, where our voters assemble are at. Also, there'll be...
Will, or?
Yes.
The state?
The state, yes.
Okay.
The state's sending out. Also, the cattle commission will have a representative at that precinct, so if they pull up, they will tell them to go across the street.
At the former precinct? They pull up to Ascension, there'll be someone in the other, in the other former precincts, there'll be...
All go on, so this is...
Right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Gage.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Stantz, I just have one question on the hiring of the election commissioners. Is there a specific time that you hire them, call for them?
We have election commissioners year-round applying. You go on our website, or you call us, we send an application, you call, you go online, you can watch the film, and you can take the test, see who you're eligible for. All the election commissioners will have to come to an in-person school for the presidential election, and that process is just a continuous process as far as approved.
So are we approved at this time?
Yes.
So it is the open process?
Yes.
Whoever is interested in serving needs to apply?
Yes, we need commissioners. Now, when we reduce, with your help, from one hundred and fifty-four to one hundred and twenty-eight, that lifted the burden that we had, because I was having these employees mild as for precincts.
And the signage will reflect the new precincts that we have, that the parish put out, for all of the different precinct locations?
The old locations will have a cattle commission employees sitting in front of the precinct, so if they might pull something, they can go vote. One thing also, these machines are getting old, so if you get the normal phone calls, this will help you answer. If a person votes, and they push their button very hard, it will shift the spring. These are nineteen ninety machines, and it shifted just enough that button might get off, and all they have to do is tell us, and the commissioners will just slide it back in. When I say move, it doesn't move far, it just gets a little off kilter. And that's only when somebody pushes it extremely hard, which does happen occasionally. So if someone calls you and say they will push on X button, nothing lit up, just tell them.
Or show someone else's name, because I, it has happened to me before as well.
Do you have to go a long way to do that? Is that...
With that being said, where are we on purchasing the new equipment? Is that a Mr. Sibley issue, or will that be a question for you?
No, that's for me. The Secretary of State, I've been told, has to gun the process. It's about a two-year process, their goal is to have it for the next federal election. We don't know what kind. The Parker Court Association chose the machine we wanted, it was a machine, and then it had a paper aspect. So when we voted, paper came up under a glass, you could check it, and then you cashed the vote.
That's the same machine that you and I talked about, baby, when I had a presentation in Ohio. Looking forward to seeing us get some new machines, because those are pretty antiquated, and this is well past time.
Nineteen ninety-four.
Thank you, Mr. Stantz.
Thank you, Commissioner Gage. Mr. Stantz has all the questions for you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Sibley, for being here. We appreciate your presence and all the information you shared with us. Okay, that brings us to our second set of visitors for this meeting, which are the Friends of Fairgrounds Field. I'll introduce them briefly. I was invited to a meeting of the Friends of Fairgrounds Field, who shared their vision for historical preservation in Shreveport, explained a little bit about the failure of our community as a whole to preserve historic structures and landmarks, and have put together a sketch of a proposal for what to do with Fairgrounds Field. Several of us were at that meeting, and there is a, because our multimedia is down today, we can't show their presentation to the public, but we can post it, it is posted, and if you click on the link on your agenda, or it looks like we're getting paper copies too, you can see it on your computer screen, or you can see it in this paper copy. Welcome, Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, staff, I'm Bill Robertson with Friends of Fairgrounds Field. We appreciate this opportunity to present to you today. We're not going to take a lot of your time, you obviously have a full agenda, I noticed you have a tax discussion later today, I think that's going to be exciting. So, anyway, I'm a volunteer with Friends of Fairgrounds Field. I've met many of you through the years, most likely through my association with Paul Campbell, Public Service Commissioner, who I've served as chief of staff for about eighteen years. Mr. Efferson, Ms. Rattens, certainly Mr. Barrell in that role. I spoke to Mr. Crack Man two years ago, and he was, I think, starting his campaign, perhaps. I serve on the MPC, and I know, sitting in Mr. Barrell's chair, when we have our monthly city planning commission meetings, it seems like every month, the audiovisual situation is different, so I know y'all are hoping for a long-term solution to that. I want to commend you on taking your public comments at the beginning of the meeting, because through the years, I've been to so many government meetings, and the official talk is first, and the public gets to wait till the very end to get its say, and the way you do it seems to be much preferable. So, we had a luncheon about ten days ago over at Bilberry Park, Mr. Barrell was there, Mr. John Paul Young was there, Mr. Gregory Young was there, Mr. Bryant was there as well. The purpose of that luncheon was to attract elected officials from the Fairgrounds area of Shreveport to a meeting to talk about collaborating on saving Fairgrounds Field. So if all you didn't get an invitation, that's the reason why. We looked at the maps, and we tried to highlight the commissioners, and the school board members, and the legislators, city council members, whose districts were intercity. That's what this campaign really is about. It's about preserving a quality and life future for the intercity in our city. And, as you know, Fairgrounds Field has been a regional attraction for many, many years. It was built nineteen eighty-six by the city with a bond issue, and it hosted the captains and several other manifestations of baseball through the years. It was built as a multipurpose facility, so it has the capability, or had, I should say, before the deterioration of the facility, to host other types of events. And it's our hope and our vision that that can happen again. So to answer Ms. Glover's question, which was a good question, we're not here with our hand out the money. We're here because Commissioner Young, at our request, sponsored a resolution simply stating the parish's support for our efforts to restore the facility. We are in constant back and forth with the mayor and the city council about the future of Fairgrounds Field. And our position is that if we're given some time, we can put together a team that will own, manage, and program Fairgrounds Field. It will no longer be a city facility only. It will be a facility owned by a stadium authority, for example, just to use a common phrase. So that's what we're doing, that's what we're fighting for. We're working to try to get as much public support as we can to bring that facility back to life. We think it can be a great baseball venue, but it can also be a venue for soccer, for football activities, or for, you know, whatever type of sport you want to try to undertake there. There's different ways you can go about that. But the point is that it's a, it's a building that has value to our community, and we're trying to insert that, and to make sure that that value is recognized, and manifested, and improved along. and manifested, and improved along. But Fairgrounds is a real important feature of our community. It's hosted the state fair for many years. And Fairgrounds Field has been part of that since 1986. And we think it has a future, and that's why we're here to ask for parish support. Now, I'm just a little cog in the wheel. I have two associates with me. One is Link Coleman, he's a real estate expert, more than 52 years in the business. And also Christopher Coe, who is an architect. And as you can see from the packets we've given you, he's drawn some very nice renderings of what the field could look like. So, I appreciate, once again, y'all listening to us, and hearing us out on this. And we certainly hope, when the time comes, you'll both favor this resolution. So, let me, it's all right, turn it over to Link Coleman.
Welcome, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate the opportunity. We're a group of the interested parties in preserving fairgrounds, and much, much more than just fairgrounds, came together in 2022, when we learned that the city was contemplating tearing the dam. And we quickly focused on much, much more than just Fairgrounds Field. We focused on the intercity, the deterioration of our intercity. The statistics that follow that. We focused on the youth in our area, what we could do to bring our diverse city together. You know, what kinds of things and activities, youth activities could be spawned in and around Fairgrounds Field, and the whole Fairgrounds campus. And so those were, those were a lot of our efforts. So this is a much, much broader picture and effort than just Fairgrounds Field. The, let me give you just a few statistics, and this may bore you, but I'll try to be very quick. Treeport, since 1980, has lost over 30,000 people. In the last 10 years, they've lost over 10,000 people. Treeport itself has approximately $2 billion in unfunded infrastructure, in terms of deferred maintenance for water systems, sewer systems, streets. We had, as of 2022, Treeport had $244 million of unfunded pension funds. In 1960, Treeport had approximately 4,500 people per square mile in Treeport. Today, we have about 1,700 people per square mile. Represents a hollowing of our city. And you can drive through some of those neighborhoods, and you'll see that unfortunate. Drive through Queensborough, you drive through Engleside, Winter Park, Sunset Acre, Country Club, Old Oaks, and other neighborhoods, Hove, and other neighborhoods. So we need to do everything we can to restore our inner city. We've got a great city, we just need to work together to make that happen. In Caddo Parish in 1970, we had over 70,000 people, 70,000 students in our public school. Today, we have approximately 34,000 students in our public school. Just a half of what we had in 1970. So, these are all not sustainable trends. So this is a call to action for our city. And many of our citizens, you know, have, a lot of them have done what I call voting with their feet. They've moved out of the area. Other ones are, you know, at home, and they're, they've given up, because they don't feel like their voice has meaning anything. And so this is where we all need to come together. We can't be apathetic. We have an opportunity, but we have to capitalize on it now. And we can't wait further, in my opinion. The, you know, and, you know, I wish I could, you know, I've been in the business for 52 years. I wish I could turn the volume back, you know, because if we had done a lot of things, if we had been more proactive individually and collectively over the last 52 years, our city could be in a much, much better place than it is today. I'll give you an interesting stat. In the 1800s, Treeport was bigger than Dallas. So we kind of let them take advantage of us. And so we had an opportunity, but let's seize that opportunity today. The Fairgrounds Field is part of an overall Fairgrounds campus. It's approximately 172 acres. It has not only the Fairgrounds Field, Earth Coliseum, Independence Stadium, the agricultural building, Boys and Girls Club, it has a state museum. So it's like a, it's kind of odd to a mall. I mean, we're in that business, we're in the real estate development business, our company is. And so this is the kind of facility that we, you know, manage and market, you know, every day. And it's like a large mall. You have different ownership out there, and so you've just got to work, have everybody work together collectively, to have them, you know, cross-pollinate, and cross-feed each other for the betterment of our community. So those are things that we clearly need to do. The Fairgrounds Field, you know, I'll just tell you that, you know, there were four different issues. We contacted the city when we found out that they were thinking of tearing the dam, or contemplating tearing the dam. They said there were four issues. They said that it was structurally unsound, that it had water penetrations that couldn't be cured in that VAS. And that's not the kind that you use for baseball. And it also, they didn't know how to use it, how to program it. So we immediately set about answering all those questions. We interviewed architects and contractors, and found out that it is structurally sound. I mean, it's built like a World War II, you know, bunker. I mean, it's concrete structure, it is very solid. The water penetration in there is a combination of city water lines that are clogged, and also a slightly undersized, you know, infield drainage lines. It can be upsized relatively inexpensively. So those are things that, you know, can and should be done. The, on the use, we immediately contacted multiple sources. The Sports Authority, the YMCA, the Dr. Gore, we talked to him before his retirement at school board. We talked to, you know, all of the various parties. We talked to Denny Durand, who wrote a very comprehensive letter to the city, which you guys have a copy of. We talked to John Lowe, who's, who's had been the 4-H county agent for Caddo Parish in North Louisiana for 40 years, and wrote a comprehensive report on things that we could do for our youth. Much, much more than a baseball park, as Bill Robertson was saying. It's designed as a multipurpose stadium. You can have, you know, youth activities and all kinds of things. And, you know, and we had, in our meeting last week, we had citizens there from Queensborough. We had individual citizens that talked about how, just in Queensborough alone, when the kids are out of school, you know, a lot of them are on the street, and getting into trouble and things. So we need activities for them. We need, we need positive things going on that are available in our community that don't be. And so we think Fairgrounds Field is not a perfect answer by itself, but it's a key cog in the wheel, we believe, that makes things happen. So, the, you know, I will just say on the VAS business, you know, I'll just tell you an aside of that. You know, I've learned more about VAS and VAS-1O in the last two years than I ever thought I'd know. I mean, including, I've had, there was a similar facility that was torn down in Indianapolis, Indiana. Over 100,000 people got infected, over 300 hospitalized, 15 died. This was a report, you can look it up on the internet, from the Center for Disease Control, the CDC report. So you can, you can find that. I also learned that, as I didn't know, that my wife, I just because I know this as an 18, 19-year-old, had most of one of her lungs removed, and almost died. So, it's a, it's a serious thing, something that you need to deal with. State Health Department had written a letter. You guys have a copy of that? And so that's how that needs to be dealt with by the city. You know, we've gotten positive feedback from, you know, public and private sector, and, you know, without, etc. And, you know, to use a phrase, you know, we're in the 19, counts, you know, we got two apps, bottom of the gun, counts three included. And so we're, we're, not only preserve Fairgrounds Field, but more importantly, in my opinion, is the bigger city issue than we're trying to address. So that's the thing we need to do, pull together our diverse city. So this is really a call to action for all of those things, and just, you know, pleading with our governmental officials to help make that happen. Work together collectively to make that happen for the betterment of our city. We have a resolution that I believe has been drafted in before you. And so we ask your approval and your support of that resolution. And that goes to the city council. So, we hear that, you know, the parish has done a fantastic job of managing your resources. We've had a AAA boundary in one place, and I think it's AA and maybe AA plus, I'm not sure. But, you know, I applaud you, and if you could use some of your mentorship, and share that with your colleagues at the city council, we would really appreciate it. It would be for the betterment of all of us. So, thank you guys for everything you do. Appreciate your interest in our community. Are we allowed to answer any questions? Shall I answer?
I have two commissioners on the board. I think they wish to ask you a question. Commissioner Burrell, you're first. Okay, Commissioner Atkins, would you like to go first?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chaco, for coming down. Thank you, Mr. Robertson, for coming, coming down. Robertson, please, help me understand where the city comes down on all of this. I mean, I understand, you make some great points about the economic development potential of the Fairgrounds. You know, the mayor, I always think the mayor is a big proponent of restoration. So, so what's the city's hangup?
Well, I think it started, and, and, you know, I personally was a supporter of Mayor Perkins. That was him, and we met, and Mr. Coe was speaking, and Mr. Man spoke with him. And so, I think that, you know, I mean, as he was campaigning for reelection, he wanted something positive to bring before the city. And was looking for something that would, you know, have a real impact, and a good thing. And that's understandable, politicians like him, something's right about that, in a way. And so I think that probably fostered some of the initial efforts to tear it down, and to try to pursue this rev interventive, you know, which, you know, the, the, I will just tell you, since 2020, the Major League Baseball exposed 42 minor league teams. Did shrink your minor league franchises. And so, you know, and I think, I think he wanted to try to, you know, propose something. Didn't have all the facts that were later developed in the city development study. And so I think that led to the initial efforts to tear it down. Then, when they issued the demolition permit during his administration, they started first with tearing down all the, you know, the, I'm going to say the soft elements within there, the sheetrock, the things, because it hasn't been managed, and turned on the air conditioning. It's been left, you know, vacant for, you know, roughly 10-plus years. And so he, he basically, I think, looked at that, the demolition permit, first thing they did was tear that down. And then they tore down a few of the seats along one of the baselines. So I think, you know, I think then, I think that was the effort that led to him wanting to tear it down, frankly.
Him, meaning Mayor Perkins?
Mayor Perkins. And then, and then with Mayor Arsenault, I think he has looked at it as, I think his staff, probably Shelley Riegel, you know, has looked at it and just felt like that, you know, she didn't want to take on the management of it, the marketing of it, the programming of it, all of those things. And maybe she felt like she had kind of a target on the back, I don't know. We're not trying to point fingers at anybody. We're just saying we need to work forward so that, so at that point, it was partially demolished. And then Mayor Arsenault was looking at it through maybe the lens of Spahr, and not really looking at it. And Chris Coe can talk to you about it. I mean, I don't know if you guys are-
I don't want to derail the whole meeting, you know, because we do have a full agenda.
Yeah. Well, I'll just tell you one last thing. You know, the, if anybody's driven by the whole hedge tax department, our, our company rehired us, and we picked it all the way down to the scope, all the way down to the, and so, you know, Fairgrounds Field, we're in that business of renovation and construction. We know that it can be done, we know it can be programmed. That's something we do every day. And so, you know, so we're not afraid of the restoration, given where it stands for that. It can be done for pennies on the dollar compared to the 125 to 225 billion dollar price tag we're running against this company.
I have one quick question to wrap up. Is there a lawsuit between y'all's organization and the city, and as it related to the date of demolition, or some of that nature? You know, we're trying to preserve, trying to inhibit demolition until, you know, y'all have some time to raise some money or something?
Well, what we were, what our suit is, and it's, you know, I wouldn't really, it is a suit, but I wouldn't really label it as a serious suit. What it is, is a suit to stop demolition until the city recognizes the, until they recognize the health aspects of the stadium. And so the governor's office found out about it. Mr. Burrell can tell you about that. They found out about it, the state health department wrote a letter to the city, and said, "Cease this is on the demolition, until you can address the health aspect." And that's what stopped the demolition.
That was, that was like, a while, wasn't it, like a year or so ago?
That was in, that was in the fall of 2022, two years ago.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Cotton?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Atkins asked the question that I had concerning the litigation with Will.
That leaves you, Commissioner Burrell.
And, Mr. President, this particular facility has been in the district of our residence for 25 years. And even prior to that, we're now in our current politics. I'm living in Queensport, and this is my own experience.
Okay. I said I have represented this area for 25 years, and even prior to that, as, as part of the Queensport Neighborhood Association, which we started in 1993, we were dealing with issues out there at the Fairground. And this was one of the issues that we were, we were dealing with later on, because it fell in disrepair and without use. Personally, I didn't have any particular care, because I'm not a big baseball fan. But I am a fan of economic development. I am a fan of putting business and interests into a neighborhood that's dying to try to revitalize. That's what I spent my last 25 years doing, whether it's I-49, neighborhood revitalization, and neighborhoods, that has been my focus, even clearing up Greenwood Road. As you remember, you used to have the old, I forget what, what the hotel was at Abbot's Resting Stadium. As part of Queensborough Neighborhood Association, we went and cleaned up all of that area down Greenwood Road, and, because that facility was, was, people who, at the time, was threatening kids at the school that was there, potential rapists in that, in that facility. So we had, so, I spent a lot of years trying to work in that area to clean it up. Getting back to the, the state fair area has been totally neglected by the city, and it's an economic engine for this city. But because of where it's located, there's not been a lot of people put in it. There's not been money put into a bond issue or anything like that to address it. But you have a number of neighborhoods around it that has died over the period. And if you remember, just recently- And if you remember, just recently, during our current census, that area has lost four people than any other district, commission district that we have in our, in our parish. So it is a fight to try to sustain some sort of economic and community activity, development activity in that area. And I'm all for that. And in terms of this facility in particular, because it did have a relationship with our past governor. Yes, I think I only called him once I found out about the situation that dealt with the health hazard associated with this, this still passed Moses up in Indiana and asked him if he would look into it and if he would shut it down. And I think that's partly where the lawsuit came because the city was getting ready to tear it down when you had all of these neighborhoods around it, plus a hospital, plus the boys' club. And can you imagine if all those people would have gotten infected from, from the airborne disease? It was totally devastating that area. And can you imagine the kind of lawsuit that people would start putting out? So to make a long story short here, if the mayor would tell us what he's going to do other than blacken and make it a, a parking lot, that's what I heard, that they were going to make out of it. I think we've got enough land out there for parking. If we're going to do something with it, let's do something with it rather than just have another open vacant field. I would like to see that. It supports Motown, Inglewood area, O'Hana Park, Queensborough, all of those areas, Sunset, Sunset, the Sunset area. So you have actually Hyde, which is close to it. So we need to do something with it. Like I said, if the city has a plan for it, that's fine. If you all would like to just have it built, another vacant lot for people to throw trash on, that's fine. But come over and help me pick it up because we could definitely use the, the help to try to revitalize the area. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Mr. Morgan, you're coming.
Yeah, just say, just a couple of brief things. The citizens voted in 2019 in a bond issue to preserve Fairgrounds Field and ask the city to basically, you know, come up with a use for it. The, we have contacted both public and private, and I think there are sources. And we have informed them, like, so public and private funding. And they just need the cooperation of the city. The city owns the facility, so nobody wants to get in an argument with the city. And so the city, all they need to do is what I call raising their hand and take it. And, and, and I think the other sources, both public and private, will come forward. There have been discussions along the way, I can tell you, about the possibility of, the Fairgrounds itself has been in tree for, for over a hundred years, I think closer to a hundred and twenty years. And there have been discussions if we could lose the state Fairgrounds if we don't act on it because it's in such poor condition. So we desperately need to do that. And the, you know, those are the, you know, we, we, we're talking about having positive things for our youth and quality of life issues. A lot of those are very expensive. This is, and we don't have the money. I mean, we're basically, I don't want to say we're bankrupt, but we're close. If you were in the private sector, you'd say you're bankrupt. And so we need to do everything we can to, this can be preserved for pennies on the dollar. There are monies that we think can come into renovating the overall Fairgrounds campus that will be, you know, if the Fairgrounds Field is done this hard enough. Because again, the Fairgrounds campus itself is one-hundred-and-seventy-two acres. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and I apologize if I overstepped.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mr. Coe, I know you're, we've gone a little long, so please keep them brief. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll come in and read, you know, architects love show and tell. You took my show away, so now you just got to tell. So, sorry, but I'm just being clear.
We'll work it out on the screen.
I'll bring you out some of the slides. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. You know, I'm an architect. I'm a former race here. I, you know, left thirty years ago to try to practice my part at the highest level I could in Newark and Los Angeles and Japan. At one point, worked for two of the largest international firms in the world. It happened to be sports design firms, so this is something you don't have to do. But when I moved back five years ago, with the goal of retiring, it became incredibly clear that there is important work that still needs to be done in Shreveport. This is a fantastic place, but my gosh, the shock I had when I moved home. I could not believe the amount of buildings that we left disappear. Absolutely shocked, to the point where you're going to see on the slides. We had not one, but two volumes of a book called Lost. And let's be really clear about this, everyone. The buildings weren't lost. We didn't displace them. We tore them down intentionally or by neglect, which to me is just as intentional. And you guys had a really interesting discussion right before we got here about voting. The underpinning of our democracy, the right of, you know what the other one is? We all went into the elementary school along with a pledge, no taxation, taxation without representation. Public funding. That is the other sacred trust, voting with respectful spending of public money. Right? It's incredible. These are the important, and the third one is out of many, one. We purgus you. It's on every piece of money we have. Out of many, one. So this issue to me is not only about the building, this is about the greater good. You've heard some really gloomy testimony about these group of people who were here earlier, about an organization that is helping to save them. This isn't their mission to save them, I don't think, but if the message is clear, everybody is worth saving. Right? Everybody's worth saving. As an architect? I think every building is worth saving. I think we have done some disastrous things in Shreveport. And it's my mission, and it seems strange, architects love to do, love to do new buildings. My goal is, let's save what we got. Can we please stop doing double things? Downtown has been ravaged by countless numbers of buildings being torn down. And now parking lots that are earning nothing, contributing nothing. So it was shocking to me when I moved back and I saw this bond issue in 2019 to fund the tearing down of a building that was funded by public money. That is a betrayal of the public trust. Unconscionable. So I'm not preaching this really as an architect. I'm preaching as a citizen, a fan of good government. To me, that's not good government. We are not at war with the city. I want to be really clear about that. I'm appealing to you personally, as good governors, let's put it that way, to help us. Let's work together, open arms. Out of many, one. Let's have one great vision. Let's do something nice. Can we have one victory, please? We are at this interesting moment in our town because we were so blessed a hundred years ago that we can't take credit for it. Let's be clear about that. We are celebrating numerous beautiful buildings here that have turned a hundred. The Chamber of Commerce Building, which was the first street memorial item. King's Highway Christian Church, a hundred years, Third High School, a hundred years. The list goes on and on and on. We are celebrating these. Thankfully, those are still with us. But at the same time, we're having a discussion about spending public money to tear down a perfectly good building that was put up with public money. That's not the way to do good government. That is my message to you. And, Mr. Evans, Mr. Evans, thank you for that, for the comments about nine eleven. And I saw you proudly salute. My dad was a career military guy. And their message is, what? Leave no man behind. Let's not leave our city behind. Let's not leave our neighborhoods behind. Can we please have one victory? We just want some support. We want to open dialogue. We think this is a huge win. This is, it's such a visible, visible location right on nine forty. It is near the gateway of our town. This would be such an easy victory. I'm telling you, I have a state-owned professional reputation, an easy victory. And the reason I can say this with confidence, on the architect of the new Joe Wacker buildings is now the State Office building, right? A seventy-five million dollar building that the state bought for less than a million dollars. That is a building that was barely occupied for thirty years, frankly, unoccupied longer than it was occupied. This is a victory. And let's have more of those. That structure is perfectly fine. The state did the studies and found out. Great shape. Built well. Let's reuse it. Everything inside will be new. Everything outside will be new. It'll be transforming. It's a catalyst. We can do exactly the same thing. That stadium was built so well. Castings Place Conference, three castings, this is an easy victory. We can do this. I'm just asking you, out of many, out of all of us, let's have one victory. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coe. Looks like that's all the commissioners who wish to speak. I would like to take this moment to ask all commissioners to silence their cell phones, please. One of them is going off a lot, please. Okay. Yeah, so now we have reports.
Yes, sure. Reports for administrative reports, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Just want to let you know we're having a press conference tomorrow at ten o'clock regarding our Law &amp; Order event that will be held September twenty-first. The press conference will be at the West Park Comebackersite, which is seventy-two ninety-four West Park Road at ten o'clock. The end of governmental meeting has been rescheduled for October eleventh at eleven-thirty at Independent Stadium. We will get invites out to you all. You should have the August twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four financial statements at your stations. The numbers for detention are fifteen in detention, three OJJ, two seventeen-year-olds, sixteen at CCC, and five hundred and thirty-five probation cases. Ms. Fraser has an announcement she would like to make.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I would like to announce at this time that Assistant Parish Attorney Mr. Bernstein will be retiring at the end of January twenty-twenty-five.
Uh-oh. We'll miss him.
I'd like to say, I, I think your reaction is much like mine when I was told less. But we greatly appreciate all the service to the parish and we will definitely miss them.
We would like to congratulate Mr. Bernstein on his retirement. We will miss him and we will provide additional information about any plans as he transitions to retirement. That concludes the administrative report. We'll take any questions at this time.
Thank you, Administrator Bryant. Henry, not two years ago, you told me you had no plans to retire. Commissioner Atkins, you're first.
Must have been a rough, must have been a rough two years. We will miss Mr. Bernstein. He's been a great help to me over the years. So, he will be around until the end of January, you said, right?
That's correct.
Hopefully, we'll have a new person somewhere along the way to join the team and have a little overlap.
Yep, that's the point.
Okay, thank you. I had a question for Ms. Bryant. Ms. Bryant, Compassion for Lives was obviously here speaking in support of the organization, or I should say supporters of, supporters of Compassion for Lives was here speaking in favor of the organization. Am I missing something? I don't understand why they, why they're speaking to us at this time. I mean, I think they did have some trouble with CCC, they're no longer serving in CCC. But I just want to be clear, I think I'm right in saying we don't have any, any control over that aspect, do we?
We don't have any control over what the sheriff, who he decides to have in his facility. I know that for us, we, we do provide some funding to Compassion for Lives. And periodically, the agencies want you to know that they're doing good work in the community.
Okay.
And I think as they work with the sheriff's office, they'll continue to work out those issues with the sheriff's office. And will communicate any concerns that the commission has regarding our situation.
Well, I've always found them to be a high-quality organization. They've done good work. So I just want to make sure that wasn't something that I was missing that caused them to feel the need to come down and, and speak in behalf of the organization. But I guess it's a good policy to occasionally remind us that they're out there doing good work. So I'll just hope that that's the reason they decided to speak to us. So, sorry, I just want some clarification on that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Gregory Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. As a former board member and volunteer for Compassion for Lives, I like to identify myself with the remarks and observations that were made by the business today. And I think to my good colleague, Commissioner Atkins' question as to why they were here today, I think we should always be reminded that this is the people's house. And if you have any concerns about anything that's going on in government, this is the place to come. To the people's house to express your concerns about how government is being run. And I always want to make sure that regardless of whether or not I agree over some of the representation that are made in this house, I always want people to feel that this is a place for them to come in and say whatever it is they want to say, as long as they do so respectfully. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. Commissioner Burrell.
Well, I guess my question is just answered because I wasn't sure either. I was just getting familiar with Compassion for Lives. And, and one of the persons over is actually my neighbor. And, and as I've learned more about it, the more I really like what they do. And I was really looking forward for them to, you know, expand and be even stronger with the new administration. I don't know what, what has happened or what has transpired. I want to share that information with me. But I know that they're on our agenda to try to get more support. And I pledge to try to help them do so because of the work that I've seen them do. So at this point, I'm not sure where that, what has happened. If there's anything that has happened, I'm hoping they can work it out. But I think it's the Woodrow Project. But I did not understand that the sheriff's office provided any resources to them other than a location. And, and they were raising their money privately as well as making a request from whatever governmental organization that's giving them money, those are the only sources that I know of connection that was there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell.
If this is a career with just a joke, just a moment.
Just for the record, the sheriff's office does not provide, not one red cent to Compassion for Lives. Just for the record. Thank you.
That's what I thought. Thank you for that point of information. I'll just say, if any of us are interested in this issue, we can follow up offline with our partner at CCC, the sheriff's office. We own the facility but do not operate it. But we are all committed to working together to make sure that it's as good as possible. And so I encourage us, if we're interested in this issue, to reach out to our counterparts across all the branches of government to encourage helpful cooperation. Commissioner Atkins, second time.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to be clear to all my colleagues that I was not trying to be disrespectful for Compassion for Lives. I like the organization. I like their, their team. I was just trying to understand if there's something I didn't know. Some, some, if something had developed that caused them to feel the need to remind us of their services. But now that I understand that they simply want to make sure that we remember them as we go into NGO discussions, that makes sense and I understand. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Blake.
Thank you. I wrote a statement out after listening to everyone speak. And I think most of us here aren't quite for sure the exact inner workings of what has occurred. But I want to thank each person who came down to Government Plaza to speak and share their heartfelt stories of their success, their life-changing story of reentry into our community from a situation of incarceration. Compassion for Lives is one of the first organizations I've learned, learned of as a commissioner. We are here to help find solutions that will make a great impact on our community and to help change the trajectory of crime and the impact of crime. This NGO is one that is doing great strides in Kettow Parish. And not just making great strides, but Compassion for Lives is making generational change. I hope to see Compassion for Lives continue to have opportunity in our parish, in our parish correctional... parish correctional facility, to provide the tools for success for each person that is incarcerated to have an opportunity to have a prosperous life in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Okay, it looks like that's all for, um, our administrative reports. Uh, we can do communcays now. Uh, some people may have offered their communcays, but if anyone else has something to say, please get on the board. Looks like there's no communcays right now. Uh, president's report, we can skip, uh, since you all still patiently listen to the Fairgrounds Guild books. Uh, and that brings us to old business.
Under old business today, we have one item and is that, that is to consider the advancing of the enforcement of Jessica Tellis's, uh, zoning condition, uh, to fill the unexpired term of.
Question by Commissioner Crackman, second by Commissioner Latt, and then Commissioner Crack.
Yeah, I think, uh, the last meeting we had, when the gentleman came down and spoke to us, Lee, in his case and why he should stay on the board, however, he also said that he did not understand why he should be removed from the board, uh, more of the reason I think he should not be on the board. He doesn't understand what he did wrong. Uh, he made that clear to us here. Everybody's seen the video, pretty cut and dry. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Crackman. Any others to speak? Okay, we can vote on the motion.
Uh, Commissioners Jones and Kaufman, it looks like, and I, and I think for the record, Commissioner Kaufman's running machine may have run out of batteries, it looks like. We're getting a plug for you.
I do.
Well, we've got another backup plug just in case. Okay, could we have a verbal vote from each of you?
No.
Okay. Okay. Oh, we had yours plugged in, I believe. Good, thank you for that. Oh. And that motion does not carry, it has board support and in opposition. Um, so that brings us to new business, where the first item to consider is 11.1, advancing the introduction of ordinance 6463 of 2024. That's in relation to zoning case 24-01-C-TAP. That's an ordinance to amend volume two of the code ordinances of the Parish of Caddo as amended. It has a parishified development code, relative short-term rentals with all of their provisions included herein and otherwise provided with respect to. Uh, and this is an item that I believe had come to you before and that we sent back to the PCC and now I have a motion by myself, the chair, second by Commissioner Thomas.
Um, I'll speak very briefly about it. We, um, noticed that when we regulated short-term rentals, there was no enforcement provision. Um, we, uh, cooperated with Attorney Bernstein, who sadly went to retire, to, um, put together, um, an enforcement provision. Um, the PCC, uh, wanted to have more detail about what would constitute a violation, uh, of the short-term rental ordinance, uh, so that people who signed up would be well-informed about what was allowed and what wasn't allowed and what would be considered, um, unduly damaging to the neighborhoods where these short-term rental businesses are located, even though they're in residential neighborhoods. Um, but if you, if you look at this, um, new language, it's extremely thorough, um, and it comes with the PCC's recommendation or passage so that our regulations can also actually be enforced instead of merely being a regulation. Uh, so I appreciate, uh, your favorable hopes and welcome any other speakers. No one else is on the board? We might have to do a couple of, like, voice votes again. If your, if your keypad, if your iPad is down, please tell the.
Commissioner Jones, if you can just, a yes. All right, and that motion carries with 12 in support and none in opposition. Uh, and that brings us to the consideration of 11.2, uh, which is to advance the introduction of ordinance 6464 of 2024. Uh, and that is an ordinance permitting the placement of certain monuments on parish property and otherwise providing with respect thereto. Commissioner Epperson.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Epperson. Second from Commissioner Gage-Locke. Commissioner Epperson, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, uh, I'd like to amend, amend and advance number 64, 64, 64, 64 of 2024. Uh, to read the following, I would have to correct the.
Do I need to read this on the record at this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, in Article, uh, Article 1, uh, Part A, uh, it would add, or entities that advocate bigotry, division, hatred, and racism, period. But then that would replace, and this following part would be deleted, entities that have declared war against the United States of America or have been found guilty of being traitors against the United States of America. That line would be deleted. Uh, and then in Section B, uh, it would delete the part, uh, the end that says, um, uh, so in the sentence, Parish of Caddo, of individuals that have been found guilty and then of a felony would be deleted and replaced with of obstructing a constitutionally mandated process.
That's basically the same, uh, ladies and gentlemen, that I had upon last time, but I, I had the wrong, uh, motion now, so I would ask that we advance, uh, to the third decision. Thank you.
For clarity, Mr. Clark, can you read the, uh, language of the ordinance, Section 2.7, Section 2-7A and B, as amended?
As amended, yes. So it would read, Section A would read, "There shall be no memorials, monuments, statues, plaques, flags, et cetera erected on Caddo Parish property or displayed in any buildings owned by the Parish of Caddo of individuals, organizations, groups, or entities that advocate bigotry, division, hatred, and racism." Period. Uh, the, and then that is the end of that section. The next section, B, would read, "There shall be no memorials, monuments, statues, plaques, flags, et cetera erected on Caddo Parish property or displayed in any buildings owned by the Parish of Caddo of individuals that have been found guilty of obstructing a constitutionally mandated process."
All right, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Blake, you're on the board to speak.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to send to committee.
All right, I have a substitute motion by Commissioner Blake, second by Commissioner Crack. Would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, please.
If there is an occasion to erect a memorial, a monument, a statue, plaque, flag, et cetera, it should be left to just such as, as a monumentous occasion, which typically a monumentous moment are not something we can truly plan for in advance. They're typically an unusual occurrence, hence why we create these mon, these moments and we shall say stone or to commensurate with the display. Creating this obscure ordinance, which are laws, not just, which are laws, they're, they're not a benefit nor do they help all the people of Caddo Parish. This ordinance is redundant, is a duplication to our state, federal, and parish laws. I suggest this ordinance include or a reference to the State Department's list of terrorists, domestic and national organizations. So I, uh, am asking that it be sent to a long-range committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner Crack.
Now, can I make a substitute motion? Give it one more second, I don't want to speak on my second.
How many substitute motions can we have? I think we should only have one substitute. We can have one more substitute motion. Um, Mr., uh, Commissioner Crack, then you may make a substitute motion.
Motion table.
Say.
I have a second substitute motion from Commissioner Crackman and second by Commissioner Atkins. Commissioner Crack? All right. Commissioner Atkins, you want to speak on your second? All right, so now we have a second substitute motion. Is anyone who should speak about this? All right, then proper order is we vote on the second substitute motion first. Can we vote?
Vote to table. Commissioner Jones?
No.
Okay. Thank you. And that fails with five in support, seven in opposition. Uh, it brings us to the, uh, substitute motion to send to the long-range committee.
Is there any discussion of this motion? I see none with the votes.
Commissioner Burrell. There you go, thank you. And that also fails with five, uh, in support, seven in opposition. Uh, it brings us to the initial motion, which is a motion to amend in advance.
All right, uh, is there any discussion about this? I'll, I'll speak very briefly. I was going to vote for the text that I see on the screen, but it has been amended and reverted to the vague language to which I objected last time and want it sent to committee. So even though, um, I sympathize broadly with the terms, since they're vague and no one is willing to discuss them in detail, I'm not going to vote for it, but I understand the position of everyone who does. Okay.
And that motion carries with seven in support, five in opposition, and brings us to the next item on your agenda, considering the advancing of Resolution 65 of 2024. That's a resolution expressing the support of the Caddo Parish Commission for the efforts to renovate and improve Fairgrounds Field and the efforts of the Prince of Fairgrounds Field towards that goal and otherwise providing with respect thereto.
I have a motion by Commissioner Burrell, second by Commissioner Thomas. Uh, Commissioner Burrell, do you wish to speak on your motion?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, again, I'd make my comments on, on that. I would rather have people working toward trying to make something happen in that area that's been totally neglected, uh, rather than, than to just have another parking lot out there for it to be put it up. This revolution is not to affect any lawsuit that's there. The lawsuit was done because of the safety of the people and I'm hoping that it holds there, uh, under this new governor. Uh, at least the last governor had interest enough in the neighborhood to, uh, to get the health department to shut it down or else we would all, well, I would say we would all, the people in that area, they would probably be sick, including myself, because I'm over there, um, in that area quite a bit. So I, I don't think, I, I don't think revolution is going to affect this situation. So I actually support.
Commissioner Burrell, Commissioner Gage-Locke, your authority.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move to postpone this resolution to the second meeting in October.
Okay. You've got, uh, you have a substitute motion and second, would you like to speak on your motion?
Yes, thank you. Um, as I respectfully am in agreement with the efforts to improve and renovate the areas of Fairgrounds Field, this is, um, litigation that involves the City of Shreveport. And though we are two separate entities, we do collaborate and work together on many initiatives. And I just think that knowing it has been difficult for them to communicate, and I say them, the City of Shreveport to communicate, um, due to this litigation that is on the table, I think it's advantageous for us to give them an opportunity to have a discussion before we move forward and take this initiative into our own hands.
Thank you, Commissioner Gage-Locke. Commissioner Burrell, you're on the board.
How do you take, uh, opposite position on this? I don't think that has absolutely nothing to do with, uh, with them not being able to communicate with the city. I was at the city for eight years also and I know that sometimes people just for political reasons become, uh, uh, obstinate. I saw no reason why the city would not share the, um, architectural plan with anyone that wants to do something for our city. You know, in, in order for you to come up with the, uh, cost estimates that you need to even sell your program, you need to be able to work together. The lawsuit should not have stopped any of that. And then have to stop any of that because they were asked, it actually asked for the information or the lawsuit was done. Uh, there's just been, cities sometimes is a bit obstinate. We are the parish, but the city sits in the parish. Sometimes I think we don't recognize that. I guess that's probably the reason why many of us as urban legislators are not recognized, uh, uh, in the parish because we represent people in the city, but, but people in the city are also in the parish too, and I think we should have an interest in something of this nature. If we knew of anything that was going to take place positively, uh, positive, uh, in this area to this structure or to the land that it sits on, I have no problem, problem with somebody just got to tell me today, and I've been on this issue for almost two years, that you got another organization that's supposed to be coming in and doing something. Nobody is telling us nothing, that they will come and ask for money or they ask us to get involved in it from that perspective. I just think that we need to move forward. If this means, uh, kind of pushing the, the issue along, sometimes we have to do that, Mr. Chairman. So again, I'm, I'm going to ask you all to consider, uh, a little bit of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Kaufman.
Yes, Mr. President, I support, uh, what Commissioner, as from Gage-Locke's, uh, previously stated in the recent being, and going to defer over to our attorney as well and ask, uh, based on litigation that the City of, whenever it's going to at this particular time, if we were to support this particular, uh, effort, what kind of, uh, situation would that put us in as well concerning the, uh, legality?
Basically, Commissioner, if you do a resolution of support, um, and they're in litigation, uh, then could possibly be construed as supporting them in the litigation. I don't know if that's the intent or not, but it, it could.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaufman. Commissioner Gage-Locke.
Shout out that grace.
Okay. Commissioner Gregory Young.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I attended a meeting, uh, and the meeting, I thought it was a very productive meeting. I used to live in that area, I guess about almost 50 years ago. So I've seen the decline of that area. I've also witnessed the decline of, um, every historic black community in Shreveport. And I think that's essentially what the gentleman, uh, Mr. Coleman, uh, was speaking to. I'm personally someone who's, uh, committed to, uh, revitalizing the inner city, uh, trying to erase some of the blight that I see. So I think, uh, you know, any sincere effort to, uh, revitalize the city, I'm on board with it. Uh, as for me, the issue is just simple about time. And now I'm going to say something and I don't mean to cast any disparages on anyone's position, but one of my favorite philosophers, writers, uh, is a gentleman who lived in the 17th century in Europe. Uh, his name was Alexander Cole. Hope to have the century right. But he coined the famous, uh, quote, "Who was rushing were on the angels there to trade." And I've witnessed, you know, our country during the previous century and even as a blade getting involved in other people's civil war. And it's never turned out good, you know, for us. And I just think it's just a matter of professional courtesy, um, that I think we should extend to the city as they're engaging in litigation, uh, with this effort. And as soon as this effort, uh, subsides or, or ceases, then I think that, oh, we ought to take up this maybe. But, you know, I don't want to see this. But you know, I don't wanna see the city getting involved in, uh, in litigation that we have. You know, it's just simple about the golden rule for me, do unto others as you will have them do unto you. And I can see a moment where we may be engaged in litigation, uh, with a particular party, and the city might find that who we're in litigation with, um, is the product of some benign, uh, prospect, and they may be inclined to do the same to us. I just think in this regard, we should take the high ground, and just, you know, be patient. That's nothing, uh, in terms of a material benefit, that this resolution is gonna bring to this whole issue. And so why bother, why, why put your finger on the scale? And of course, Attorney Frazier has just spoken to something that I was concerned with, because I tell you, I think I mentioned this to one of my colleagues, that, you know, if I'm involved in litigation, and if I have a municipality, municipality or, or government body that submits a resolution favoring my side, you better believe, uh, the other side may file a motion to suppress, uh, this resolution, but our shit will be game in trying to put it into record. And so I just don't think it's the best practice for us to get involved in someone else's, uh, business. And as soon as that business is taken care of, I think we should, as I've just referenced, we should, you know, take a, a genuine interest, a formidable interest in getting involved in efforts to, uh, rehabilitate or revitalize, uh, our great city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Young. I'll just say, my understanding of the litigation at hand is that the demolition was stopped only by the health hazard of the back mono and histoplasmosis. Um, the litigation is, uh, the question of it is whether it can proceed, um, and the litigation itself is also the reason why, um, officials from the city are not in communication with the folks from Fairgrounds Field. So I don't, I'm not, I can't envision a way that postponing that will encourage communication. Um, I can see the litigation concluding and the stadium being quickly torn down because no one spoke up to say that we should save it as a landmark. So that's why I support, um, open dialogue about what can be done with this landmark and, uh, this resolution. Uh, Commissioner Burrell, this will be your second time, so I'm gonna just give it to you for now. Okay. Um, Commissioner Blake.
Thank you. Um, I want to state that this is, um, one of, my, as a teenager, one of the coolest things to see built and attending as a young adult is sad watching the demise of it falling apart. And, um, I grew up on that side of town, it was an incredible place. I'm not into sports, but I was into hanging out with my friends and my family and, um, being a part of the community. I, though, however, have reserve in, without having full knowledge with the situation with litigation, I know that the mayor was interviewed on Kiel Radio and stated, um, I believe that the issue has been cleared up, and that's why they are right now have open bids for demolition. And so I just think until we get more information, um, I think we need to postpone this, and then moving forward, if we want to show support, let's do so, but let's find out completely what's going on. Because it truly is a sad situation, that this has not been kept up and, I mean, it could be an amphitheater. It's, it's an incredible location in our community, and it's sad.
Thank you, Commissioner Blake. Commissioner, uh, so this is a mo- this is a substitute motion, uh, this would be Commissioner Burrell's second time on this, so it's Commissioner Edwards' first class.
Having been the commissioner of, uh, complete urban district twelve years, District Six, I think I had three city councilpersons within that particular district. And I think it had to be about ninety, ninety-five percent. Three Watts Road was the only, uh, buddy step was really ruling in that district after twelve years. I ever collaborated very good with those three, uh, councilpersons, Milton Reed, uh, Phil Bush, you all may not know them, Phil Cereal. We got a lot of things done, uh, in that district. Uh, right now, uh, district I represent is about sixty percent rural, forty percent urban, but I still have three city councilpersons in that district. And, uh, I'm, I'm going to, you know, go in favor of voting in for the postponement because a couple of them had spoken to me about some things, so maybe some information that they can glean about it October time that may shed a little more light, I think. Them speaking to me about it, that, you know, I, I'll share an opportunity to share that information. I think postponement would be clear at this particular time. I think we've really got the back on the table in a different light now, and the possibility that, hey, well, something may happen between now and the postponement.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Now, Commissioner Burrell.
Okay, now, I'll add a note on this, that I'm, I'm sorry that some of my, uh, my commissioners are, are putting out, uh, for part, I'm concerned, misinformation, uh, on this. Uh, this resolution has nothing to do with that lawsuit. Um, I'm trying to protect my district and the neighborhoods that are around it. I've, I've been close enough to this project to know that they have not resolved the issue of, uh, the, uh, environmental issues associated with this project. Um, the only thing that kept them in place is this lawsuit. And you all, we cannot support, uh, a resolution that may, may not do much of anything. But my opinion is concerned, and I gave you a letter, I gave you a letter that I sent to the governor because of this situation, that it could cause, uh, a devastating effect, not only in the area that it's located, but the surrounding areas. Unless you have gotten information that I haven't gotten, which I've found out more today from some of my colleagues about projects that's actually in my district that I've been on television a number of times about, I found out more today than, than I have the whole time. But yet still, you can make a decision for them to move ahead on something that, that they have not shared yet, whether or not they've cleared up the health hazard associated with this particular project. They're going out to bid on this project. I talked to a contractor who's bidding on it tomorrow. So it's quite a rush to do that whenever they have not shared with, with the public, whether it's on Kiel or anywhere else, whether or not they've actually cleared up the problem that deals with the environmental hazard. So that's, that's the reason why I have a concern. I have a lot of constituents in that area, as well as a hospital with safety for that that I have not heard the mayor come out and say that they've cleared that issue up. Now, if you all have told, I mean, if you all can tell me that here, I have no problem. But I haven't gotten that, and I'm the one who wants to represent that area. I'm the one who's over there almost two or three times a week. So that's the reason why I felt that anything that I can do to give them, give the city an opportunity to come and clear up some of the problems that have been sitting there, especially dealing with the health hazard, because that, that's, that was my number one concern. I couldn't care less, you could wipe it off the face of the earth for a time, but until they do it, and they do it in a proper manner, that it will not affect all of the people who are in those neighborhoods, just like you protect people in your district, I protect people in my district also, because I've represented over twenty-five years. So that's my position, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Thomas.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I simply want to call for a question.
All right, questions have been called. Let's start on call for questions.
Commissioner Blake? Thank you. And that carries with nine in support, three in opposition. So we will move to the motion on the floor, which is the motion from Commissioner Dave, the substitute motion from Commissioner Dave Watts, postpone the item until the second And that motion carries with eleven in support, one in opposition, uh, and, um, that brings us to our next item, eleven point four, is to consider advancing a special resolution honoring Gold Star survivors and recognizing Gold Star mothers.
Motion from Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Thomas. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to the global in advance, eleven point four, eleven point five, eleven point six, eleven point seven, eleven point eight. Uh, well, we'll leave it there for now.
Did you want to keep this?
Oh, yes, the agenda additions as well. And, um, I'd like to be added to eleven four, eleven five, eleven six, eleven seven.
All right. So we have a motion to englovo in advance, eleven point four, five, six, seven, eight, and I suppose eleven and twelve. All right. I have three requests, Commissioner Gage Watts.
Thank you. I would like to be added as a substitute to eleven four, five, six, seven, eight, and the two agenda items. But then the additions.
That was four, five, six, seven...
Eight. The two agenda items.
Okay, so all, all of them.
Eleven, twelve, and eleven thirteen. Yeah, I don't...
I think it would be eleven, eleven.
Eleven, eleven, and eleven, twelve.
Eleven, eleven, and eleven, thirteen.
Commissioner Gage Watts. Commissioner Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was gonna ask, uh, Mr. Jones, if you would consider a, uh, courtesy of adding, um, eleven that, eleven point nine and eleven point ten to his motion. Um, I think it would be respectful to both these candidates to advance the vote to Thursday for consideration. Um, you know, I think they're both solid candidates, and we can discuss it and, and sort it out on Thursday.
Mr. Jones?
Uh, I actually had intentions on postponing it to the next work session. It was gonna be my intention to postpone it to the next work session. I understand other commissioners are interested in, uh, getting more into that, so that's why I want to take a seat.
Okay. Commissioner Burrell?
I'm good.
Okay.
Oh, oh. Two and a half hundred and one. Add it to four, five, six, seven, eight.
All right, eleven point four to eleven point eight. Mr. Parker? All right, we can vote on the englovo in advancements of eleven point four to eight plus eleven and twelve.
Commissioner Jones?
That motion carries with twelve in support, none in opposition.
Okay.
Like, I'm gonna vote back. That's crazy, because it's plugged in. What just happened?
All right, we can vote to eleven and eleven. And the motion from Commissioner Atkins.
Yes, I'd like to...
Second by Commissioner Lazarus. Commissioner Atkins.
I'd like to englovo in advance items eleven point nine and eleven point ten. I'm open for, uh, discussion if there are changes to that. I would like to...
Uh, there's a motion to englovo in advance, eleven point nine, eleven point ten. Any discussion? Oh, I see, Commissioner Jones, are you on?
Uh, yes, oh, I do agree that these are two pretty solid candidates, but, uh, I was going to move, postpone it to the next work session. Uh, I gotta be, begin. Trying to be safe.
Uh, all right, so it's been, there's a substitute motion and a second from Commissioner Gage Watts, postponed until our next work, work, these two items.
Is it as a substitute motion, they made a substitute motion?
I think so.
Yeah, uh, and if I, can I speak to it?
Yeah.
Um, hearing here, these are two solid candidates, but, uh, I have been an advocate, excuse me, for, um, making sure our commissioners, and I understand everybody was made aware of the vacancy, but just giving everybody enough time to be able to, uh, put forth any potential candidates that they have. And I don't think we have anything in place that gives us a timeline as, as sold or how, how far along that has to happen.
There's nothing here to be any deadline.
I don't, I don't. In fairness, and I understand, and I've already spoken with, with the person who, uh, that I, you know, nominated for this particular deal, there's just not, we're not encouraged to get there, and I don't think we have to rush it. We can be fair to other commissioners, we'll have the opportunity, uh, and I still think these two candidates will be there, um, two weeks from now, so that's why I stand on it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones. So we can vote on the substitute motion. Ms. Blake, for the next work session.
The next work session is what day? Commissioner? It's gonna be on October, the thirtieth, I believe. Uh, last, yeah, it's the last day of October. Um, September, I'm sorry, because the first October, uh, regular session is the third. So it is September third. Okay, and that motion passes with eleven in support, one in opposition. Um, and that brings us to the end of the review business, and we are now at citizens' comments. Later, Rivas?
Do we have any comments later?
I see none.
Okay, uh, I think we may have skipped communications. Let's see, already page. Commissioner Gage Watts?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to remind and ask everyone to wear red on Thursday. We'll have those two presentations to, um, Hispanic here this month. Uh, we'll have a visitor here to receive that, as well as from the City of Cell Disease
All right, everyone wear red on Thursday. Yeah, or maybe we can get some red, can you have red here? Uh, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, uh, because there is such a great, um, large population here in Cattle Parish, I just want to say congratulations to the New Orleans Saints for winning the Super Bowl.
Oh, that's great.
Thank you, and a great...
Is there any motion to adjourn? We need adjourns.